...in the United States of America. And to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time I would like to ask Lisa Collins, Tim Mettinger, and student representative Cullen Trivet, is that, did I say that correct?
Yes.
Wonderful. To come forward, we'll come around the front side of the desk here to take the school board oath of office.
Shane, oh Shane.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Saint Jude, who have been sorely elected to the Holman Board of Education. Of the School District of Holman, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of Wisconsin. And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office. To the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
Okay, then at this call Christina, if you do the roll call please.
Sure. Kate Mayer.
Here.
Tim Mettinger.
Here.
Lisa Collins.
Here.
Gary Dunlap.
Here.
Joe Giddens.
Here.
Cheryl Hancock.
Here.
Anita Jagazinski.
Here.
And Cullen Trivet.
Here.
Okay, with seven of the seven school board members present, I would declare a quorum. Approval of the agenda. I note that the school board agenda, meeting agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With that in mind, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I would just note that there is an amended minutes, copy of the minutes amended in your folder, and those would be the minutes we would be approving this evening. So seeing no other changes, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Board organizational meeting. The first official action of this evening is to appoint a temporary chair to conduct the Board of Officers' elections. I would entertain a motion to appoint a temporary chair for the Board Officer election.
I would make a motion to appoint Cheryl Hancock as temporary chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations for the temporary chair? Any other nominations for the temporary chair? Any other nominations for the temporary chair? Seeing none, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close nominations and unanimously elect Cheryl Hancock for the temporary chair. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Election of Board Officers. President, are there any other, are there any nominations for the Office of President?
I would like to nominate Cheryl Hancock for the Office of President.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of President? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Cheryl Hancock for the Office of President.
I so move.
And the second?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Vice President, are there any nominations for the Office of Vice President?
I nominate Anita.
Are, is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice President? Any other nominations for the Office of Vice President? Any other nominations for the Office of Vice President? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Anita Jagazinski for the position of Vice President. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Clerk, are there any nominations for the Office of Clerk?
I will nominate Kate Mayer as clerk.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations for Clerk? Any other nominations for Clerk? Any other nominations for Clerk? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Kate Mayer as Clerk.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Treasurer, are there any nominations for the Office of Treasurer?
I'll nominate Gary.
Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any other nominations for Treasurer? Any other nominations for Treasurer? Any other nominations for Treasurer? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Gary Dunlap for Treasurer.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Gary, you didn't vote nay.
I was thinking of it.
Well, thank you to all the 2012, 2013 school board members and at this time, and officers at this time, I think the positions people are in the correct position, so we will move on to other official duties. And for the audience, this is our organizational meeting, and so we really take care of these designation of things, so the first one is the Official Newspaper. Dr. Carlson. Oh, Official Depositories, I'm sorry, thank you. Mr. Austin.
Yeah, I'm here tonight to present the designation of the official investment and checking depositories. Unfortunately, at this point in time, we have bid this service out. As promised, I presented this information back to the board, the bid process itself, earlier this spring. We are currently reviewing those bids at this point in time. There's five institutions that have submitted bids for both checking and investment services. Those bids are currently being reviewed at this point in time. Due to the changing in checking and investment services, the scope and offering of the services provided, we're really looking at some pretty neat services going forward with both checking and investment services. So I'm really doing my due diligence to look at the RFPs, going through them line by line, page by page, to make sure that the recommendations put forward in these bids are going to meet our specifications, provide the service we need, provide a location that is convenient for us, and provide a cost-effective service as well. So at this point in time, unfortunately, I don't have that recommendation, but I have one of two options. We could defer the action to designate the official checking and investment depositories until the bidding is complete, and we are tentatively planning on action on May 13th. Or option two would be to approve the current investment depositories, which may require then for me to come back to you if another depository is recommended other than our current depositories as you see listed. The current investment depositories and checking depositories are Associated Bank, State of Wisconsin Local Government Investment Pool, Park Bank, and Associated Trust Company. So those are our current providers. Depending on the bids and where they finish out at, we may need to make a change or we may not. It depends, but... So option one would be defer action, tentatively till May 13th. Option two would be to approve the current investment depositories, knowing that we may make a change and come back to you in May.
And as Mr. Austin is saying, number one, this is the order in which, so we would be recommending, number one, to the board. Option one.
Correct.
So what is the pleasure of the board, to defer action?
To wait.
Or to come back. So is that a motion, Gary?
Yes, it is.
So Gary's moved to defer action to May 13th, is that the correct date? Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on this? So is, if I could just ask, so this year, is it more involved? You kind of alluded to that, that there may be more?
Yeah, I asked each and every bidder to be as creative as they possibly can, both on the checking services, deposit services, investment services, and what I got were some pretty creative options. More electronic deposit services, actually depositing checks within buildings potentially, basically ACH-ing those checks, or electronically depositing them and ACH-ing them into our check remotely from each building was one option. Investment in sweep accounts overnight funds was another option that was discussed and presented. So some interesting ways to improve the way we do business, reduce costs, and so on and so forth, and then hopefully provide a little bit better investment return on the dollars that we do have available. So it's been interesting to see the variety of proposals that have come in. It's not just the standard checking account, here it is, the standard fees anymore. Banks are really being aggressive right now, and there's a wide variety of fees and various interest earned on the accounts as well, so it's been interesting to say the least on the options that are provided.
Good. That sounds like we're looking at things proactively though, so I think that's a good thing to do.
It's extremely promising, I'm excited, and that's why I'm going through it very detailed, just to make sure that I cover all the bases on it, and in fact, I'm probably going to be interviewing more thoroughly the firms too, and calling some of them in to just fully understand exactly how they're going to provide that service to the district too.
Okay, thank you. So a motion has been made and seconded to defer action on the investment and checking depositories until May 13th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now designation.
If the record could show that I abstained from taking any action and/or participating in that discussion.
Yes, thank you, Tim. So now designation of the Official Newspaper.
You have an issue paper that is recommending our continue, continuation identifying the Courier Life for Analaska Holman as our designated newspaper, and be happy to take any questions, but that would be the recommendation.
So I would entertain a motion to approve designation, designating the Analaska Holman Courier Life as the Official Newspaper for the district.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association Membership.
It is a recommendation that we continue our affiliation and membership with the WIAA, and again, if you have questions, be happy to answer, otherwise recommend moving this forward.
So I would entertain a motion to continue with the WIAA membership for the School District of Holman activities.
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
So failure to do so would make us ineligible for post-conference competition, so unless there are any major concerns.
No, I struggle with this one every year, because I would like to see the WIWA maybe fall under the Department of Public Instruction or have some, because they are completely independent, answer to no one, but we do not have any other recourse if we want our students to participate in this, so we're kind of in a, in a spot. I understand that, so it's reluctant, we have to do this, but I would like to see them maybe not be quite so, you know, independent.
No, we could actually put forward a Wisconsin Association School Board.
I had thought about that, that just pursue that.
I mean, if there's some interest in pursuing that, so... Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to continue on the WIAA membership for the School District of Holman activities. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Wisconsin Association of School Board Membership.
This would be a recommendation to continue membership with WASBE, and again, unless you have questions, be recommending moving this forward.
Maybe just for the new member, could you just summarize, and I know Lisa, you've already attended a WASBE conference, but summarize some of the things that we utilize their services for in the past.
Yeah, we get a number of publications. This is again, the primary professional association for Board of Educations throughout the state of Wisconsin, so they do provide a great deal of information to the board directly. There are additional services, we, even at our level, we make several contacts with, whether it's staff at WASBE, asking questions, some advice or guidance, and very helpful at many times for us, which typically are questions surrounding board, the function of the board, and so on. It's hard to, again, there's a number of things, I know that annually, and you'll be dealing with this next, as far as the delegation, as far as the annual school board convention, but really, it's the voice for the board in many ways at the state and even at the national level, and that you have someone that is looking out for, at the state level, your interest collectively, Board of Educations throughout the state. And it's just one avenue that you can utilize, and they're there to serve you through your membership, so.
So with that in mind, I would entertain a motion to approve the district's 2013-14 WASBE membership.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. As Dr. Carlson indicated, then, since we have retained our membership, we do need a representative who would represent the district at the January annual meeting, and I guess a lot of times we just see if anyone is interested or willing to do that. Kate, you're shaking your head kind of yes.
Yeah, I am, unless somebody else wants to be, I mean, I would go and not be the rep too, it doesn't matter, I loved it last year, so.
Anyone, who was our current rep? Was it Kate?
Kate.
Oh.
Did a good job.
She did a very good job.
I don't know if I, as a new person, I can go to that and be a rep, I know that some districts have, and I'm not sure how that works, but I'm interested.
Okay. You can go, all board members, actually, we've kind of encouraged all board members to go as a team to the event. It's, the representative would go in and, as they vote for resolutions on what they're going to take to the state legislature and promote, that representative would vote on behalf of our school district. So every school district in the state gets the opportunity to vote on this, so. So you want to be considered?
Yes, I'd love to be.
Okay, so, and Kate, you are, you want to be considered, we would do nominations, correct?
Oh, you know, I could just go.
Okay.
I think if Lisa wants to be, Lisa wants to be a rep, that was a very good experience for me, because I had more things to read, and I had reported back to the board, so it's a good initial involvement for you, but for sure, I will go, but I think that would be great. I would defer to Ms. Collins.
Oh, well, okay, great. So then I would entertain a motion for the Wisconsin Association of School Board Representative.
I so move.
For Lisa Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, Lisa, congratulations. The next one is designation of CISA IV Representative. It's held once a year. This year, it is scheduled for June 5th, 2013, at 7:00. It is held at West Salem at their headquarters, and again, it is their formal business meeting is what you would attend, and oftentimes, it's the election of the CISA board members and hearing the annual report of the CISA organization. So is there anyone who might be interested in doing that?
I'd be interested in that.
Okay.
I have a lot more free time than a lot of people that work during the day, so my nights are even more free too.
Is there anyone else who might be interested? Well, then I would entertain a motion to appoint Kate Mayer as her CISA IV Representative.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of appointing Kate Mayer as CISA IV Representative, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Designation of board meeting times and dates. In your packet, you receive the 2013-2014 board meeting calendar. Our board meeting policy, I think, is more neutral into what the dates are. Our specific practice has been the second and fourth Monday of the month, with some exceptions for the December 23rd potential meeting and the May meeting for Memorial, and we've actually, in the calendar, it already is designated as that Tuesday following Memorial Day. So I would entertain a motion to approve the school board meeting times and dates as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Phew, well, that's pretty much that. Recognition and thank you, Dr. Carlson.
Well, if I could ask Ms. Hancock to go around, I'm going to give you a few things, and if I could ask Brianna Schwab-Bauer to come on up, and we're going to recognize Brianna for her year of service, representing, serving as our Student Board Representative during this, this school year, and appreciation and acknowledgement of your work, Brianna. There's a certificate in behalf of the Board of Education, as well as a small token of their appreciation as well for you.
Thank you.
So congratulations and thank you again.
Well, thank you all for having me. Yes, practice for graduation. Thank you very much. Do you want to say a couple comments? Is there a microphone?
There's a wireless mic, Brianna, or you can go.
I wanted to say thank you to the Holman School Board of Education, and going back to, I moved here in third grade from a different school district, and I remember when I first moved here, I didn't know how to add, and all of my classmates knew how to add, and so I was behind everybody in math, and through some brilliant teachers, I was able, I eventually learned how to add, and that's what my experience through the Holman School District has been. I've, I've had so many opportunities introduced to me, and I've got the chance to work with so many amazing people, and this has been one of those great learning experiences where I technically learned how to add, or I learned how to become a better person, and I've grown as a person, as a woman, and as an individual, and I've, this experience has really helped me to find a definite path in my life, and I have made great connections with some great people, and I know I have a great support here in Holman, and I wish Cullen the best, he is going to be an awesome student representative. I had a, some good conversations with him earlier about the position, and he's all excited, and he has a lot of energy, so I'm looking forward to seeing what, where this year takes you, and I hope it is just as wonderful as an experience as it has been for me. So thank you again for all of your support, all of your guidance, and everything that you have taught me.
Brianna, you were unable to be with us, I didn't prepare you for this question, but you weren't able to be with us at the prior board meeting, which we would have recognized you. Would you be willing to just share a little bit what you were doing?
Oh, definitely. I went down to Madison for a state senate scholar program, and I was there for a week, I met with different groups of people, lobbyists, reporters, senators, I'm trying to think of other interest groups that we met with, and I also, I was, played the role of a senator for a week, where I created legislation about, well, the question that was given was, should we lower the tattoo age? And so, as a group, we had come, we had debated out, and we eventually came to a vote, and it was, it was a good experience. I learned a lot about our government, a lot of good things, and a lot of things where you want to pull out your hair, and you go, oh, my dear Lord. But, a lot of good things, and I met some great people, Senator Jennifer Schilling, Steve Doyle, I mean, we're just so blessed in this community to have great representatives and great people representing us, and it's, it gives you faith for the future to see people like them doing what they're doing and working for people like us.
Again, thank you, Brianna, for your time and your service.
Thank you.
And good luck, best wishes.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and continue, we have some additional recognitions that I'm going to work my way through. We have some employee special recognitions that come up this time of year annually, and if you allow me just to walk through some of these quickly. First of all, our volunteers. National Volunteer Week, we greatly appreciate the efforts of, and if you keep count ongoing, we've had well over 3,000 volunteers over the years, and roughly, oh, anywhere three to 400 new each year. Their assistance is crucial to our programs, and they assist us in a great variety of ways. The individual schools in the districts have been holding special recognition programs during the month of April, and to thank and acknowledge, and I know there's some more this week, the many contributions made by our volunteers. So again, the district is very grateful of all their efforts. I'd like to thank those in our district, our principals and others that really assist and make it, make it possible for our volunteers to come in as well. So on the consent agenda this evening, the board will be asked to take action on formally recognizing our volunteers. National Teacher Appreciation Week is coming up, May 6th through 10th, the 10th. This week has been recognized at the national, state, and local level for many years. The district, again, is very grateful for the quality teaching staff that serve our students on a daily basis. The school board hereby rec, will recognize through their action on the consent agenda, May 6th through 10th, 2013, as National Teacher Appreciation Week, again, joining many districts around the state and nation, and you'll be doing that as part of the consent agenda. Also, we recognize National School Nurses Week, May 6th through 12th. This is a week to celebrate the nursing profession and the specialty of school nursing. The district joins the National Association of School Nurses in recognizing the contributions that our school nurses make every day to improve the health and success of our nation's children, and including right here in Holman. During this week of celebration, as with our other groups and our other employees, please take time to recognize and celebrate and honor the good work of our nurses throughout the school district. And again, as part of our consent agenda, the board will be asked to take action on formally recognizing our nurses. So some great celebrations that we So some great celebrations that we look at annually at this time of year. In addition, we have received some donations recently from Jerome and Kathleen Nelson. Mr. Nelson is a U.S. Air Force veteran, and I had communicated earlier that we had the wonderful opportunity to present Mr. Nelson the Holman High School diploma. Thank you to Mr. Bear, and also Mr. Gittens was available. And I know that was a special time for two veterans to share and reflect. So thank you. Not necessarily related to that, but also the Nelsens have made a $500 donation to the high school's Acts of Random Kindness program, which that is a program that Mr. Bear works with his staff to work with families and students that, depending on their need, he can use that account to help as appropriate. So we thank the Nelsens for their generous donation. Also, Gunderson Lutheran continues to step forward to help our school district. They recently donated 60 computers and monitors. And as noted here, I think we're well over, or not over, but close around 1,000 or so computers from that, as far as helping school districts, not only ours, but through the tri-state area. So thank you to Gunderson Lutheran. And finally, Ms. Liz Schenk recently donated a Dell laptop to the Activities Office, and I believe that's specifically being used, utilized with our track and cross-country programs. So again, and overall, thank you so much for those who have donated. And I think that that is it for Dell. Does she have questions?
Thank you very much. I would just say, Cullen, you have big shoes to fill. Brianna was a wonderful representative. She challenged us. She was outspoken at some times, and as she grew, so did we grow. And we really appreciate the fact that you brought the student perspective to us. Students are why we're here, and so you were a delight to work with. And I know Cullen will do just as fine a job. So thank you, Brianna, and best wishes to you. And then, as Dr. Carlson said, we are blessed as a district with a number of volunteers that we have that continue to make a difference in the district and the benefactors who help us to be the excellent school district that we are. So thank you for all you do for us and, and supporting our efforts. Then I would move on to public participation. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board relative to any item at this time? We ask that a five-minute time limit per person be followed. Please come forward, state your name, address, and topic to be addressed. Anyone? Okay, then we will move on to reports and discussion. Educator Effectiveness update. Dale and Wendy.
Thank you. And Wendy is, Ms. Vasquez is in the audience. Tonight, we're just going to keep this very brief. We have been communicating for a couple months here on updates regarding educator effectiveness. And again, educator effectiveness is what all the schools, all the school districts in the state of Wisconsin will be transitioning to with the start of the 14-15 school year. It's really going to be our primary way to look at how we can better support, best support our teachers and our principals through their professional growth and evaluation. The update tonight, we don't have a big presentation. A lot has been going on. I wanted to share publicly, which I've already shared with the board and we have shared with staff, thanks to the good work of not only Wendy's leadership, but those who serve on our educator assessment committee. They've been doing a lot of work, building their own knowledge, and we have communicated that the model that we will be moving to is the Department of Public Instruction model. And most, or many of you know that there have been two, there are two primary models. One from Department of Public Instruction, and also one that is being developed, has been developed by CISA VI. And so through the strong recommendation of our stakeholder group, and my own observations, we will be moving forward with that model. When it comes to what the board, you already have a board policy on directing us to make sure we have a, a model in place that we are effectively evaluating staff and so on. And also, there is acknowledgement in that through your employee handbook as well. So I, again, I want to thank those that are involved in, in that recommendation. We have a lot of things coming up, though. Again, full implementation by 14-15, and there's a lot of work that needs to take place. So some of the things that are coming up. Towards the end of May, we have a, a group of representatives that will be going to a three-day training with the Department of Public Instruction as far as learning more about, truly about implementing that model and being trained. These people, I'm, I'm included in that, will be going, and will, this will be the core group that is part of a pilot next year. And we have teacher representatives, as well as principal representatives, Ms. Vasquez, myself. We, I think it's a small group of about seven or eight of us, and we will be going and experiencing that. So we continue with our learning as a group, and then we will be broadening that throughout the district for our staff. And this will be something that you will continue to see updates and more information as we continue on this journey. This is a good thing. And it, it's, it's a lot, it's going to take a lot of work, a lot of commitment, but this is a, this is a real positive. And so I'm looking forward to it and, and to move this forward. And so with that, be happy to take questions you have. This is a real brief update, and, but Wendy's here as well, and we will keep people informed. But I know our committee is meeting, I think, tomorrow again. And so we're, we're not only continuing learning, but looking at steps in communication with, with staff, and how are we going to move this forward. So with that, questions?
Any questions? Of course, there is a cost that goes with this. At this point in time, it continues to be included in the budget?
Well, the actual fee per, I guess, license or per person. There's a lot of other costs that we know are going to be eaten by the district, not provided. But right now, the estimated cost for that fee is about $80 per person. And that is what continues to be in the governor's proposed budget. But we do know there's a lot of training and servicing. We're going to have to work on that.
I think just to keep you abreast that, that, those uncovered costs would be affecting us, of course, the costs. Hopefully, they'll stay, but we've seen more unfunded mandates come down in the past. So hopefully, that won't happen this time. Then the next item is within-school district choice update. Julie.
I don't believe, Ms. Crack, we don't have something in the board packet. I think we'll just, she might caption some of the main ideas that she's going to share with us.
Good evening. Here to give you a little update on within-district school choice. I know that you have received some updates in the past couple weeks, but I wanted to give you a more current update tonight. We have a total number of requests this year of 19. Of those 19 requests for within-district choice, 17 of them have been approved, and two of them have been denied. The guidelines used in the decision-making process, as per Policy Number 432, reflect requests in which the child is already attending the requested school are approved. These requests are the results of families who may be moving out of the boundary area and would like their children to continue to attend the school they have been attending. Requests in which a child has a sibling attending the requested school are approved. When the two guidelines that I just mentioned do not apply, there are additional factors considered in making a decision to approve or deny. Through the request process, parents are asked to give a description of the educational benefit to the child if the request is approved. When they describe better teachers or a better school, that's not a good reason for moving children. If there's an educational benefit to approving the request, then it is determined whether or not there's space available in the requested school. If there's no apparent educational benefit to approving the request, and the request is for convenience only, the request is denied. Individual extenuating circumstances may need to be considered when making a decision to approve or deny. The within-district school choice process continues to be challenging. Administration continues to receive concerns that non-resident requests appear to take priority over resident requests. Staff members who wish to have their child or children attend the school in which they work are being denied because it is viewed as convenient for the staff member. Denying these requests has been very difficult. Some staff have shared with me that there should be an exception when considering approval or denial for their request, as having their child in the building where they work can have an overall benefit on their child's well-being and educational performance. Tonight, I asked the board if it, if you have an interest in considering such an exception for employees.
If I could just add, we wanted to keep you abreast. We have done that and written communication through your weekly status report and so on as well. But we thought it was, would be important as we continue to live this process, and I thank Julie for really her leadership with this. It is a difficult thing. We, we've, those of you that have been here for a while know the challenges that we continue to experience. And so we, we thought, let's make you, again, give you an update, but also pose the question, and I know through our SALT committee, that has been a vehicle of doing a lot of work on this, and that, and that hasn't been that long ago. So want to just keep you informed, and as a group, if you have thoughts or concerns, as this may perhaps continue to evolve or change, we want you to make sure that you're communicating that to us, or Julie, myself, or through our, our committee chair and so on. Tonight, you know, a couple of the specific concerns that continue to be with us. If there, if you want to have a discussion, this is not for action. We did not, we don't have a recommendation, and certainly can be fine with just leaving it as information for you. And if you have specific direction, we can come back with more of a follow-up for you. So certainly, this is not for any action at all. If anything, at the most, some conversation or discussion.
Discussion? I know that this is something we've struggled with a few times. And I think the goal was that eventually the school choice options, except for very specific purposes, would be eliminated. And the moving out of the, the, and it really is, just affects elementary level. So moving out of the elementary area and keeping them there was kind of the one exception. And so then if their sibling came later, those would be why the exceptions came. But yeah, it is, as a district, we really believe that every elementary school provides the same or exceptional. It may not be exactly the same, but an exceptional educational opportunity for our students, no matter which elementary. So certainly, if the SALT committee wants to consider it, that would be the appropriate place for the staff is another twist. And then what do you, you know, do you define as immediate family? And is it children, or is it grandparents? And, you know, we've had all of those kinds of things too, so.
Well, and is that fair to the public, to everybody else who pays taxes? And do I have an exception made for their child to go to a specific school just because they don't happen to be an employee? I'm just throwing it out there. I see both sides. I really do. That's my issue. With so many things, I can always see both sides. I do understand that there probably is a benefit to a child going to a school that a parent maybe works in. But on the other hand, is that fair? There's always an exception. There, there could always be a reason why there's a benefit to a student going to a certain school. But boy, I would hate to be another parent who wanted my child to go to that school, but I don't happen to work in it. That would stick in my craw. So I would have to really, really think about this. I think we would really have to discuss this. And I think that would be a huge can of worms to open.
I think that's one of the comments that we get about the open enrolled. Because there is a chance that I've denied someone, but I might put an open enrolled student in that exact spot.
And we've heard that many times. There's no easy answer. That's the thing.
Other discussion?
Well, I would say then, the newly formed SALT committee, if they want to take that up and further discuss it. Otherwise, I don't see, it's difficult. It's very difficult. But I don't see an outpouring of interest to make changes at this point, so. Thank you.
Yes, I guess if the board would be so, allow us to do that, we would like to move to 11.5, our Community Collaboration Venture update. We've got some community people here, and it would be really great. I know Dan McHugh recently had some surgery, so that is on our agenda as an update. I know that I was not able to go to the meeting this last week, but Jay Clark did attend on behalf of the district. So Jay, if you have any updates, information you'd like to share with the board?
Just a quick update of the activities. We met on the 16th. Two fantastic facilitators from Turbo guided those in attendance to a variety of activities. And it's just so positive and uplifting as a group, just great positive energy. The group, through the guidance of the facilitators, developed, I guess I'd say, a preliminary draft of a mission statement for the group to help guide the energy that we did have at the meeting. We also identified some of the strengths supporting the community center, became aware of some weaknesses that we might need to attend to, identified opportunities, and finally identified some threats that might be between us and the success of the community center mission. We were assigned homework, so that we came to the next meeting ready to maintain the momentum. We're to identify the program offerings and plans that each of the collaborators might see applying to the community center. And that next meeting is scheduled for April 30th. And I, I always, when I think of how Laurie and Marilyn and Dan described things, feel like I don't do a very good job, but, so they may have things to add.
Would any of you like to say anything about the meeting? If you, we don't do this very often, but please feel free, or?
I would just totally concur that.
I would only concur with Jay. The, the energy was extremely positive. The participation was very collegial, and a lot of support to be able to say, keep it going, keep it going, keep it going. Just a lot of enthusiasm to be able to say, whatever is in front of us is a challenge or a barrier. Let's find a way to work our way through it.
Okay, well, great. And I received some information back from it, and I would agree that that is the key. I think as a board, we've now had a presentation from the group a couple times. And also, as a professional fundraiser, I know how difficult it is to say, we're going to build a community center someplace. And we are, I guess, in my mind, and I've had that conversation with Dr. Carlson, that it would be very helpful for us as a board. And we would work, of course, with the administration to come up with a resolution that gave them some, I guess, even deeper guess, even deeper commitment, that if we, you know, the specific space we're looking at may not be the appropriate space for a variety of reasons, objections, things that they've identified, but that we will find a space, I think, as Mary Lynn said, let's be proactive in this, and let's find a space. I think we've got that kind of space at the high school site, and so, we'll have some conversations, and that is something that could potentially come to us as a board at the May 13th meeting, but, think about that. Please share with Jay and myself, and Mary Lynn, and Dan, and Laurie, any concerns you might have, so they can answer those questions, but when I look at those possible things that may be a negative, I really think that we can find solutions to them. So there is my PSA for the project tonight, I will end there, but I do think that we will try to do that. Details obviously have to be worked out, and we understand that, that's why the resolution would have to be done in a way that that would happen. The school district does not and cannot afford to put ourselves in a position where it is going to be a burden to the district and the taxpayers in five years if something happens. So we understand that, I think the committee, you see them shaking their head, they understand that, too. It's pretty clear that we need to address those things, but until we have something more solid, it is very difficult to work with some of your major benefactors to say, oh yes, we're going to do it someplace, and, you know, just maybe someplace on the high school site, or on the school district land is enough that, so there, like I said, that's my PSA. So thank you, folks, for coming and all the time you've put into that, and we will get back to the rest of our agenda. Board member comments? Board member comments, reinforcement, and committee reports. And Cullen, this may be your first time to make some comments, so just listen, and I don't know if you've watched Brianna, but we have you at the end, so you'll have an opportunity to listen, but what we do is call upon board members, and Lisa, we call upon board members to make any reports or comments of committee meetings that they may have attended, or if they see something exceptional in the district they'd like to highlight and compliment, it's a great opportunity, or if you have a concern that you'd like to have addressed, it's a great opportunity. So having said that, I will call in Kate Mayer.
SALT net, April 15th. We are close to the end of our duties for this year. Shortly, you'll be seeing policy recommendations coming for youth options, high school credit for courses taken at middle school, and open enrollment, and so, listening to the conversation about open enrollment, and I assume that that'll be, that'll be coming up also next year, and, you know, unless we do end up revisiting it with SALT. Our last scheduled meeting is May 20th, and we have three items left for that time, I think, or two, grading system, interscholastic sports, so, we're almost finished. It's been a pleasure, been a very good committee.
Very active, thank you for your leadership, Kate.
Yes, no problem, my pleasure.
So, Mr. Meninger?
Just a few quick things. First off, I certainly want to thank the residents of the district for allowing me the opportunity to serve them again as a member of the school board, so thanks to all of those there. Buildings, Grounds Committee was supposed to have met this evening, was postponed to next week due to some conflicts, so we will not be meeting until next week. Just some great things coming up under the consent, but really, again, the recognition piece around, all the people will help make this a special district, our volunteers, our teachers, and the nurses, and certainly thanks to them, very well deserved, you know, it's tough to limit that recognition to a week a year, it should be every day, as far as I'm concerned with that group, but certainly people who really make a difference for the school district. And then lastly, just to publicly, I want to express my condolences to Cheryl.
Thank you. Mr. Dunlap?
First of all, I'd like to thank all of the volunteers of the school district, they're very important to the success of the school district, and we appreciate the support. I'd like to, I'd like to thank all the teachers for what they do and how they do it, and we're very proud of our teaching staff at home, and I'd like to welcome Lisa to the school board, like to welcome Cullen to the school board, welcome. Our next finance committee meeting won't be until May 20th, so we've got a while to think about that, and I'm also asking everyone to think spring, I need to go to a baseball game with all the pair of mittens on, I think. That's all I have.
We wish you could go there, too. Thank you, Gary. Mr. Gittens?
Yes, I wanted to mention something about the meeting with Mr. Nelson and his subsequent diploma, and I think that a lot of people in this country are realizing that there are a lot of veterans out there who are, either have no graduation credit, and are subsequently in no man's land, and they need, they need the support of everyone to get recognition of this. And Mr. Nelson mentioned that his neighbor was another man who did not have a diploma, and was therefore couldn't enter into anywhere unless he got permission from someone. So, I just want to thank him for coming forward and taking a stand, and hopefully, there will be other veterans out there who will do the same thing.
Thank you, John, thank you for doing that. I know that they're the greatest generation, there are a number of people, and they, it was a great program to be able to provide them that diploma, so thank you.
We just got to get them started.
That's right, that's right. Mrs. Jagazinski?
I wanted to congratulate Mr. Nelson. I thought that was, every time I go on the district website, which is a couple times a day, that's the first picture I see, and it, it kind of chokes me up a little bit. I just think that's such a neat opportunity, and what an honor for you to be able to be present and present him with that diploma. I just think that's...
We've had coffee since then.
Oh, that's just amazing, and then for him to donate back to our school district, that's, that just blows me away, that's just really neat. So I wanted to thank the volunteers and all the people that we recognized and thanked tonight, but to thank him and his wife especially for donating back to our school district. Let's see, I wanted to say we had our SALT committee meeting, which Kate already talked a little bit about, Cheryl, I'm sure will touch on the Personnel and Governance Committee meeting that we had last week. I wanted to also mention the Teacher Appreciation Week and School Nurse Week, which in the school I work in is always like a double treat week, because they always run like at the same time, and the school's all full of baked goods and food for like a whole week, but actually, I shouldn't make light of it, it's a, it's a great time to celebrate all the school employees that we have that, that make our, make our workplace so wonderful and keep our kids safe, and band-aided up, and educated, and everything else, so make sure you tell them that you appreciate them, and how much they are treasured by our students and our staff and administration, and. Brianna, I wanted to thank you for all you've brought to our board in the past year that you've been on. I'm kind of sad to see you go, and looking at you, just you're like a beam of light sitting out there, and I keep trying not to look up at you, and you just keep hitting me in the eyes with your beaming smile, and you're an amazing young woman, and you are going to go some far, you are going to go far, far, far in your life. I can't wait to watch you and see in 20 years where you are at, because you are, it's, it's just like, I just can't wait. You are going to have an amazing life, it's going to be just a pleasure to be able to say, I knew her 20 years ago, and I look at her now, so, thank you for all you gave to our board in the past year. And welcome, Cullen, and I don't mean to, for you to be intimidated, but I'll talk about Brianna tonight, because her shoes are big, but you can fill them, so, welcome to the board. I'm glad you were brought on, and the students must have a lot of faith in you, and I can't wait to get to know you, too, the same way we got to know Brianna. And Lisa, welcome, and Lisa's my neighbor, in case everyone doesn't know, so, I know her pretty well already, and she's going to be a very, very good board member, I'll put a plug in for her, so. Also, last but not least, first home track meet tomorrow night, hopefully there's no snow and not a lot of rain, and come to the concession stand, because I have brownies cooling on my corner at home, so, that's all I have.
I was going to ask about the brownies, so. Lisa?
Well, I also want to say thank you to the volunteers, I also want to say thank you to the volunteers in the district, because giving your time and yourself to students and the school, I think, is a huge thing, and I don't know what all capacities are for the volunteers, but I'm really proud that we have so many people that want to be involved, and I'm excited to be here. I think I was more nervous about today than like the whole election. I'm really proud, and I've been getting to know folks here on the board, and I'm, I have a lot to learn, so I'm hoping that I can have some help to do that, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Lisa. And then Cullen, Trivett?
Well, first meeting, just getting a look around and see how everything's working. If anything, I'd like to thank the students from the school district for electing me and giving me this opportunity to be on the board and see how everything works. Couple, just maybe some student recognitions, I'd like to recognize, Holman High School DECA is heading to the International Conference, leaving tomorrow, so exciting for that, and then, of course, the Home State Track Meet, or the Homes Track Meet.
Thank you very much. And I just have, as Anita said, Personnel and Governance did meet, we are looking at policies, one is directly related to volunteers, and looking at things that we have done as a district on background checks and those sorts of things, so if you have any thoughts on those, we have brought it before the board before, but we are looking at that update, and continue to look at benchmarks for the human resources component of the district. The only other thing, of course, Lisa and Cullen, welcome to the board, and please let us know, let me know if I can be of any help, and Dr. Carlson and the rest of the board members I know are there to assist you as well. And thank you for selecting me as president again, I appreciate that very much. Committees, I think it's mentioned, sometimes committees meet over the summer, sometimes they don't, it's really based on the amount of projects that they have to work on, but if you have an interest in specific committees, Christina, if you could send them the committee descriptions, especially for the new members, and Cullen, we do invite you to be on our committees, the board committees as well, so if there's one that you are interested in, there are four basic committees, it's Personnel and Governance, Finance Committee, Buildings and Grounds, and Student Achievement and Learning Committee, and for the most part, our committees include community representatives, so. And that was something we talked about, the Personnel and Governance, also reaching out, so if anyone has an interest in serving on a school board committee, let us know, we're forming those as we speak, and that's how I decided to run, years and years and years ago, I served on a committee and got to know a little bit about the district that way, and I think sense of pride, the student learner goals that still exist in the district, I was, Darty Berg and I were board members on that committee that helped establish those, and we've looked at them, and really, things haven't changed, so they're good, they're good goals, and when you can leave that lasting impact on a district, it really means a lot. So thank you. Correspondence received, you did get committee meeting reports, Buildings and Grounds, Student Achievement and Learning, Personnel and Governance, our school board meeting schedule, May 13th is our regular board meeting, the 25th is graduation at the Lacrosse Center, and that is what this is all about. Seeing those young people walk across that stage is just a very uplifting and fulfilling thing to do. We need to let Christina and Dale know if you're going to attend, the school board is, does sit on the stage and participates. May 28th is our May, regular May second meeting, it is a Tuesday, keep that in mind, there's a retirement reception on May 30th, and June 5th is the CISA meeting, June 10th and June 24th are our regular board meetings. And school board evaluation, you received a copy of the school board evaluation in your folder this evening, we aren't planning to discuss it this evening, again, the Personnel and Governance Committee, though, is looking for your impact or input on that, if you feel it was too long, I know I've heard some comments about, well, what do we do with this? And so, I think it's something that Anita and I will do, because we're the Personnel and Governance, it's the, kind of a fitting committee, maybe look at one or two in-service meetings that we could bring to the district based on the results of the board evaluation, and, you know, if you feel like it's, sometimes the questions seem like they were asked in the beginning and the end, if they're redundant, just let us know what you think about that. I also said, I don't know that we necessarily have to have the form in the policy, I'm kind of a policy, kind of, you know, it doesn't make sense to me that the form is in the policy, so, we're going to look at that, too, Roberts rules, all of those kinds of things. So, any, any comments on the evaluation input? Seeing none, then we'll move on to District Administrators' Report. Dr. Carlson?
Just a couple items I want to add. First of all, those board members that took the oath tonight, make sure that you sign, if you haven't already, and see Mr. Clark, we need, before you leave, we need to make sure that that is taken care of, it would not be good if we went after midnight tonight without getting that taken care of, so, so please do that. In my report, I do have listed as an item, the Personnel Report, so I just want to speak to that specifically on, on two items on the Personnel Report that is included in your consent agenda this evening. So I am going to pick two items out and just talk a little bit about that. First, you will note the preliminary layoff notification for Amy Tessing. Ms. Tessing is a valued teacher in our 4K program, due to staffing needs, it is necessary for administration to recommend to the board this evening to issue Ms. Tessing a preliminary notice of layoff. As it is a layoff recommendation, Ms. Tessing would retain rights to recall to the district in a position in which she is qualified. Our hope and intent is to minimize the amount of time she is actually on layoff. I'm optimistic at this time that she will be recalled soon, but I must stop short of any guarantee. So tonight, the board would be taking action on issuing a preliminary notice of layoff. At the March 13th board meeting, or, excuse me, the May 13th board meeting, the board will be taking action on issuing a final notice of layoff. These steps and timelines are regulated by state statute, I believe it's already, should be already obvious based on my comments, that this action is not related to any performance because it is a layoff notification. And so, again, I just wanted to bring your attention to that, that one item. Second, on the Personnel Report, I'm pleased to recommend to you the name of Beth Hobbs to become the district's next transportation supervisor, replacing Roger Saxton, who is retiring at the end of this year. Ms. Hobbs currently serves as Assistant Transportation Supervisor. I want to thank Mr. Clark for facilitating a very thoughtful and thorough process to ensure that we choose a person who will lead our transportation services with the highest level of integrity, trust, creativity, and forward thinking. Ms. Hobbs is highly respected throughout the school district, I want to thank Beth for her passion for serving our students and parents, and for her high level of commitment and support to our employees, specifically in the transportation services. I believe Beth is here tonight, and if you wouldn't mind standing, Beth, and just so everybody can see you and know who you are, and again, Beth is my recommendation to you, she's on the Personnel Report as part of the consent agenda, but I knew I had to make comments now because there's no other way I could highlight and recognize her, so thank you, Beth. With that, that's all the special comments I wanted to make, unless you have questions.
Any questions with Dr. Carlson? Okay, then seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda items. I would note that we have a number of item, board meeting minutes, which it was the March, was it the 19th, I think, was the day that was amended, it really just was some of the roll call and who made some motions, so the, you have a copy of the amended minutes there, the Personnel Report, the Financial Claims and Account, Instructional Services, four-year kindergarten lease agreements, which we discussed and had a report on at the last meeting, Pupils Services, CISA 4 contracted services, which we had a report on at the last meeting, as we did the Field Experience Contracts, Human Resources, Employee Handbook revisions, and first readings of Policies Administrative Rules. And the Volunteer Appreciation Week, National Teacher Appreciation Week, and National And the volunteer appreciation week, national teacher appreciation week, and national school nurses week. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items unless someone would like to pull an item out and consider it separately. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
So, move.
Quiet group, is there a second? Second?
Second.
Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and congratulations, Beth. You're welcome. I would then entertain a motion to go into executive session. Mrs. Mayer, if you would like to read that for us, please, we'll put you on the spot your first night on the...
All right. Be it resolved that the Board of Education moves to executive session as per Wisconsin statute 19.831, see for the purpose of considering supervisor compensation.
Is there a second?
Second.
And you need to do the roll call, Mrs. Mayer.
Okay. Kate Mayer, I'm here, Tim Menninger?
Yes.
Lisa Collins?
Yes.
Gary Dunlap?
Yes.
Joe Gittens?
Yes.
Cheryl Hancock?
Yes.
Anita Jagosinski?
Yes.
Okay, we will take about a three to five-minute break, and convene a...